All right, welcome everyone to Committee of the Whole. I will go ahead and start off with reading our public notice. Public notice is hereby given that the meeting will occur electronically without an anchor location in accordance with Utah Code 52-4207 version four due to the infectious disease COVID-19 novel coronavirus. The council chair, myself, has determined that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location because physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain in the Murray City chambers. The public may view the meeting via livestream at murraycitylive.com or via our Facebook page at Murray City Utah. You can also make citizen comments or public hearing comments to the following live through the Zoom meeting process. Those wishing to speak during these portions of the meeting must send a request to city.council@murrayutah.gov by 3:00 PM on the meeting date. You will receive a confirmation email with instructions and a Zoom link to join the meeting. We can also read into the record by sending an email and coordinates or during the meeting to city.council@murrayutah.gov. And comments are limited to three minutes include your name and contact information with that. All right, everyone, welcome again to the Committee of the Whole. We are going to go ahead. Per bowl of minutes for Committee of the Whole, October 20th, 2020. Can I go ahead and get a motion? Or if there's any discussion to be had?
If there's no discussion, I will move approval of the Committee of the Whole Minutes, October 20th, 2020.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a first semester.
Jennifer. Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hels.
Aye.
Ms. Martinez.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Ms. Dominguez.
Aye.
All right, it looks like it has passed and we've approved the minutes. We're going to go ahead and move forward to our discussion items. And first will be Brenda Moore and Robert Wood to talk about the independent audit discussion for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Go ahead, Brenda.
So we have recently just completed or in the process of the very last steps of the completion of the audit for fiscal year 2020. So far, it's turned out really well. I think you all have a draft of the financial statement. It has undergone a review with Rob Wood's partner and we added a few commas and changed a few wordings on some sentences and that's about it. So we're about ready to print the hard copy. Rob is here, I believe that's his iPhone XR and hopefully he will turn on his camera and then he can discuss what he found and go over the financial statements with you a little bit and kind of review what his audit intel. So there he is.
Sweet, I thought my didn't realize my camera was off. Okay, pleasure to be with you all tonight and provide these services during these different times. It's been a little bit challenging here and there, but we've made the best of it. As always, we're excited that we are coming to a close of this audit season and be able to present to you tonight what we put together. Obviously, as you see before you, the PDF that I'm staring at is 149 pages long. So there is a lot of information that's included in this city's cover, but we appreciate not only you as council and what you do for the city, but the management team we've been able to work with. Brenda and her staff have been outstanding and fabulous to work with on, over the last couple of months as we've gone through the audit and sampled and tested and so forth. I've had a chance last week to meet with your audit committee and go over the financials maybe in a little bit more detail than we'll do tonight. Tonight, we'll try and keep stuff maybe a little bit more brief because I understand you have a very extensive agenda tonight. But really what I want to do is just kind of cover some financial highlights and then answer any questions that you as council might have in reference to your statement. But in reality, what we do because your audit is required by the state auditor's office and bondholders and so forth because of the debt that you do hold, we provide the service. And on pages nine through 10 is our independent auditor report. That's really its PDF pages 17 through 18. This is what everybody's kind of looking for to say, okay, are they complying with accounting standards? Is there any misstatements, any exceptions that we need to know about? Happy to report that as it says at the bottom of page nine, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of your governmental activities, your business type activities, each major fund as listed in the fund statements, and then the aggregate remaining fund information, which is funds that aren't really significant, they get to be combined. So that would be like your cemetery fund, that's the only governmental fund that doesn't qualify. And then there's three proprietary funds that meet that same criteria. Also, you have your internal service fund that is combined with the business type activities in their fund statements and then gets consolidated actually with the governmental activities when it rolls up to the entity wide statements. But that's probably more than you actually needed to know on those statements, but this is the best opinion I as an auditor can give your organization. As the statements go through, it's broken up into different sections and whatnot. And one of the highlighting sections that Brenda actually works on is what's called a management discussion and analysis. This is about a 15-page section of your financial statements that is actually one of the only spots where you're going to get comparative information. Obviously, you have so many funds and so many activities and whatnot going on to try and say, hey, this is what happened this year, this is what happened last year. We can't do that on all the fund statement because they already cover multiple pages. But within the there are some tables that actually give you some comparative. It starts out by describing what the financial statements consist of, not only your governmental entity wide, but also your fund financial statements. And then on page 15 or PDF page 23, you get a synopsis or summary of what's happening in not only governmental activities, but your business type activities, which is all your enterprise funds, your water, your storm sewer, your storm water, your sewer, golf, power, and so forth. That's all your business type activities. Those are all consolidated together as are all your governmental activities. And then obviously you look at and say, if we were one big conglomerate business, what it would be if you were combined on that total. But you can kind of see some of the trends here in current and other assets for the governmental activities, you grew by a little over a million dollars, whereas the business type activities and the current other assets, they grew a lot. They had about a $9 million increase and so forth. You can see what's happened in capital assets. Really, if you kind of look at the change governmental activities had a, almost a 10, a little over a 10 million, actually nine point some odd million dollar increase in their capital assets. Some of that coming from the fire station, the donation of capital assets from developers when they complete subdivisions or streets and then they deep those over to your city engineer for you guys to go ahead and maintain and take care of those assets as they deliver the services to your residents. It also covers, here's a summary of your long-term debts, your net pension liabilities, which is the city's retirement plan, your participation in the Utah retirement systems, each of the respective systems that they provide, not only for your public safety, your governmental employees and so forth. You also get a snapshot of your net position and where you stand on each of those. So this is the good place to give you a quick snapshot of what's going on, like a balance sheet type item. If you go to the next page, it gives you a synopsis of governmental activities, business type activities, where the revenues are coming from and how they compare between year and also your expenses by what we call function. So what type of function it is in the government? Is it general government? Is it us providing public safety, doing highways and public improvements? You can see kind of across the board, public safety was about the same in expenditures this past year. General government dipped just a little bit. Part of that, I think, was your planning for the COVID and so forth. You had some increases in highway and public improvements. I know there's a lot of road projects and also some water projects that are happening, especially along Main Street and throughout the city. Parks remained about constant, so did debt service. Now, the debt service, that's the payments that you're going to make on your, the interest portion of your debt payments. And then obviously you can see what's happening in the business type activities. Overall, when you look at the increase in net position before transfers, you had $5 million in governmental funds for fiscal year 20 compared to 4.6. So a slight increase from what you had last year, but there was a lot more transfers between the enterprise funds and the governmental funds. Some of that is the business type activities transferring resources for the capital project fund to take care of the construction on some of these projects like water lines. Because I know this past year, you issued out a new bonding for $8.054 million in the water fund to help construct and upgrades a new tank and also water lines throughout the city. So that's some of the reason that why those transfers has increased because the business type activity, it's their bond, they have the revenue for it, they transfer it over to a capital project fund, which is where you as an organization account for a lot of your capital development going on throughout the city. So this gives you the snapshot of what's going on comparatively through the city. So you can see those trends going up, going down and kind of give an overall sense what's happening not only in our government funds, which is probably ones that you guys manage a little bit more because those budgets are monitored a lot more closely than they are on the proprietary, but also gives you a snapshot of how all your business type activities are doing together. It also later on in this document, it covers capital assets and long-term debt. Maybe I'll just talk about long-term debt real quick. If you look on page 24 or page 32 of the PDF file, it shows your revenue bonds that you have outstanding, not only for 2000 comparatively. So we had a decrease in our revenue bonds between 19 and 20 in the governmental activities. And then the increase that we just talked about in the business type activities is related to not only payments being made, but you had a net increase of $6.2 million in bonds because of the new water bond that you got from the state of Utah. Had a great interest rate of 1% might add, so that's, you know, debt probably well worth it because it's got very little interest rate attached to it. As you go through into the basic financial statement, which is, it begins on page 27, this expands the summary schedules that we just talked about. It gives you a little bit more detail as to where information is coming from and what it's tied up in. So you have, it shows you your cash, your investments, your account receivable, and also, you know, the components of capital assets, lands, the land underneath the roads, construction in progress, what's going on throughout the city and so forth, with projects that have not completed yet. In addition to expanded disclosures on current liabilities, non-current liabilities such as compensated assences, customer deposits, accrued interest payable on your bonds that is due in fiscal year 21, but related to fiscal year 20, and also your net pension liabilities broken up between governmental and business. So these two statements, your statement of activities and statement of net position are still really consolidated, all the funds together, but this gives you a little bit more detail. Now, you as a council probably work more periodically with what's going on in each of our funds and get updates on those because I know you have to approve budgets for each of your fund statements. Those statements begin on page 30 or page 40 of the PDF file. And here obviously is your governmental funds. You begin with your general fund, which is your largest operating fund at the city. You have your capital project fund, your redevelopment agency, the library fund. And on the next page, because it's just too big to fit onto one page, combined with the totals, you also have your cemetery fund. If you look at the bottom of page 30, when you look at fund balances, say, well, how are we doing? Fund balance is kind of the leftovers after your assets minus liabilities minus deferred inflows says, well, this is how much we still have. And one of the categories that the state looks at in your, with your general fund in particular, but if you look at the bottom, your fund balances for each of those respective governmental funds has got a strong, positive, healthy balance. That's what you're looking for. You don't have any deficit. Each fund is able to stand alone on its own. It's not really having to be subsidized or billed out or you're having to make plans for how do we make up and eliminate some of the deficits that might be in this one. One of the categories the state's interested in is looking at your general fund. They really want your general fund, your unassigned, assigned and committed fund balances to be between 5 to 25%. So really, if you look at the categories there, that's because non-spendable and restricted have, non-spendable can't be spent by you, you have no choice to that. Restricted comes with third-party designation, so that isn't free to spend for whatever you want. So they look at the stuff that you as a council control, which is your committed, assigned and unassigned. So for fiscal year 2020, you're at, you had $11.758 million. What the state says is that number needs to be between 5 to 25% of the general funds' current year revenues, which is found on page 34. So your general fund revenues was at $46.8 million. So when we do the math on that one, you're just slightly over 25%, but we rounded down for this purposes because I think you're no more than $50,000 over to say you are right at the maximum of what the state wants you to be at. So well managed, well maintained, have some strong, healthy things, but also there's a lot of projects going on in the city, so things can change in a hurry. And part of that is we just know what was going to happen with COVID. COVID actually brought in a lot, millions upon millions of dollars. I think Brenda has recognized in the general fund about $684,000 to reimburse you for cost, additional costs and salaries that were being covered during fiscal year 20. So that was part of the reason the fund balance is a little bit higher than it normally would have been. But obviously on page 34, it gives you some breakdown that you can look at the net change in fund balance for each of the funds. The general fund had a net increase in their fund balance of 439,000. Capital project fund had a decrease of $3.99 million. A lot of that is because of the construction project. I know the fire station, station number 81 just finished up. A lot of that resources were transferred to the capital project fund in fiscal year 19 to help pay for that project and other projects. Well, the capital project fund spent a lot of those resources this year. You can see the redevelopment, the library fund both had savings and all the libraries and process of saving money up in order to get to build a new library down the road in a couple of years. So they had a net positive increase of $933,000. Those begin on page 38 and it covers not only a breakout and what components you get of your current assets in detail, but it also says, here's the deferred outflows of resources, which is just a Gatsby term for delaying of kind of like a, an asset that's going to be paid, almost like a prepaid asset in essence. And then you also have your liabilities and your deferred inflows. And then you get to your net position. If you look along that bottom row, you've got a $27.9 million in the water fund, $19.6 million in the wastewater fund. So going across the board, your proprietary funds have a healthy balance. Those are the four, those four funds that are reported on page 38 are your major funds. If you look at page 39, you have this column called non-major enterprise funds. That's made up of three different funds. That's your solid waste, your telecom and your Murray Parkway or the golf fund and whatnot. We aggregate those together because individually compared to the other proprietary fund, per the Gatsby standards, they're not considered major. But in the back half of the statements after the note, we do separate and show you individually what makes up not only their balance sheet, but what's making up their income statement and how they contribute to the government and so forth. But overall, they had positive changes this past year and are performing well. And then that far column is your internal service fund. That's really being like the central garage in your risk management funds. We also have statements behind the footnotes that breaks out and shows you how each of those respective internal service funds are benefit, or how they're functioning as a standalone entity, if you wanted to take a look at those details. But obviously, if you look at the change of debt position on page 40, you had positive balances in the first three funds. Stormwater had a slight decrease of 879,000. That just fluctuates and goes up and down, but the, these are ways that you could look at and say, how is the fund performing and do we need to change rates? Or are the rates that we currently have set for those operations, are they helping to cover the services? Because that's what you hope for your business type activities is the revenues that you generate will help cover all the expenses or transfers that need to be done so that that business can be self-sustaining. You don't have to subsidize it through other taxes or transfers from the governmental funds. That really kind of covers your, what is your fund statements? And then you get into the notes that just gives you details on what you as an organization follow or practice for accounting standards, who makes up in the governmental entities, what funds are involved and so forth. Goes into more detail on your investments, not only with the state treasurer's office and their PTIF, but also gets into investment you have with a company called Morton Asset Management, who manages some investments in CDs, corporate debt securities and so forth, which allows you to get a little bit better rate of return than you're getting from the PTIF. But they've done a great job in trying to help you manage some of your assets and get you a little bit greater return on your, on the cash that's really just kind of sitting there rather than keeping it with the bank. More breakouts on capital assets as you go through this. I won't take time to really cover the notes. There is some details on the, on the long-term debt in note number 12 and how that changed like on page 73, which is page 84 of the PDF file. It shows you what's happened not only with our bond debt and our premiums on bonds, if we had any, because those get amortized, but it shows in the governmental activities. We had no changes on those and we paid off $925,000. When you look at the proprietary funds, they paid off almost $907,000 this past year, but added that bond with the state for $8,540,000 so you could do some water projects. The notes, we continue to further go on and describe what's happening not only in our, with our pension and retirement systems and how those are outlined. You are paying everything you need. So a lot of the stuff on the pension stuff is really, it's paper entries. You're making the contributions as each payroll ends, you're required to submit not only if employees are making contributions, but the employer contribution. So you're in full compliance with what URS is, is trying to get you to do. What's beneficial about URS, they manage the state's retirement fairly well. We are actually probably between 85, we're probably closer in the 90% funded category, whereas other states might be below 20% funded. So those liabilities will be a lot bigger, but I know these liabilities have been on the books now for about six or so years. And that is we report your obligation of any potential, not only net pension assets, which you find more in your public safety sector, but your net pension obligations, which is most everybody else, most other governmental and enterprise type employees. But it gives you some different breakouts as you go through the notes. I won't take time to cover those tonight. Maybe I'll just highlight this real quick. On page 90, there's a few activities going on in the, in the cities that have happened since July 1st through this. Obviously, we're all aware, hey Corona, or the coronavirus or COVID-19, as we refer to it, has impacted the city to a certain degree and the federal government has issued out these trillion dollar stuff. Well, your portion that you've received from Salt Lake County was actually two deposits for $1.456 million. A lot of that's going to be covering the salaries and benefits and so forth of your public safety. In essence, the federal government is saying, we want to rent or lease your public safety employees for you. So that's going to open up maybe some other funds that you can do for other projects and that. One of the things I know Brenda's been busy with is the new bond you issued out for your city hall that closed dish recently and those have been out of the market selling. So that's going to be a 30-plus million dollar bond that will hit as you guys construct your new city hall and the location and landscaping whatnot around that building. So we kind of disclosed that's taken place because we had to issue these financial statements yet. You as a council, I know one of the requirements you have to do is adopt a budget and then you also amend the budget throughout the year. And then by the time you get to June to June, you're doing final amendments and adopting a final budget for the city to adhere to. That's found on page 91 of your statement. That's where the general fund budget to actual is done. We show you, here's what, the original column is what you adopted in June of 2019. The final budget is what you as a council adopted in June of 2020. And then we show, well, what actually happened? Well, as you can see, the revenues actually came in at $595,000 higher, your expenses by department. You can see that each department, for the most part, has had a pause. I think each department has actually had a positive change. Interest and fiscal charges were a little bit different, but nothing significant within there. So when you get your excess of revenues over expenditures on page 91, you had a net savings of $4.57 million, which helped increase your fund balances this past year more than probably you were anticipating, because you were anticipating 7.40, you ended up at $11.89 million. So that tells you that the city is operating within the parameters that you set for the general fund. We also do budget to actuals for any other, all the other governmental funds are reported within this. On page 92, you see the budget to actual comparison for the redevelopment agency. Bottom line is they actually had less than expenditures of $1.22, $1.26 million compared to what you had budgeted for them to spend. And that, some of that is just timing of projects, maybe they hadn't occurred yet. The next page gives you your library fund and what happened with them and overall their total expenditures, which you look at from a state compliance standpoint, say their total expenditures, that is savings of $161,000. So also a positive change. If that number is negative, then that's actually a state compliance finding, that's something we would have to report on in the back of the book. Then it gets into some supplemental schedules and so forth. I won't take the time really to cover those because we've talked about some of those information. There's also a section called statistical and these give you sometimes 10-year analysis or say, here's our most significant sales traction contributors or property taxpayers, not only for the current year, but maybe nine years ago, kind of just some of the requirements. This is required if you want to get the excellence in governmental reporting, which is the GFO certificate. We actually show upfront, I believe your organization has received an excellence in financial reporting for 39 years. Well, we don't expect that to change. We expect you to be celebrating 40 years come next year. So you put together this statistical so that you can actually comply with that report, but it also gives the public and US council some interesting information that you can look at as far as trend histories on some of these items for 10 years. The last item that I'd like to cover before maybe we answer any questions is the compliance section, which begins on page 45. So there's two requirements that we have here is we issue a report on your compliance with government auditing or our tests work in accordance with government auditing standards, which says we need to look at your internal controls over financial reporting and also your compliance at other matters that you have to deal with complying with state laws, complying with federal laws, complying with grant agreements. Say you can only use this money for certain aspects. We take a look at that stuff and how it's designed and how you as an organization organize and handle and how you might segregate your duties, the process flows between major, major financial transaction areas like how is payroll done? How is cash dispersment done? How do journal entry? Happy to report, obviously, we can't audit every single transaction. We do a lot of sampling and so forth and confirm a lot of your information with third parties that you do business with or that you collect taxes and whatnot from. Happy to report, really, when the whole process was said and done, we had one journal entry throughout this past year. Now, we looked hard and wide and turned every stone, you know, that we could think of as we did some of our samples. So Brenda and her staff do an excellent job to only have, for the size of government that you are, to only have one journal entry. Outstanding job being done by the finance department and keeping your books healthy. But really, this report says we didn't find any material or significant deficiencies in the way Murray City is organized and the way they operate. The final report we give is on page 131 through the end of the book. This is required in a compliance with your compliance with the state auditors, state compliance audit guide. Now, they tell us some stuff that we need to test each and every year, such as your budgetary compliance, the fund balance percentage that we talked about, approving budgets, you guys having open and public meeting at training, how you use and record restricted taxes like your B and C road funds that come from the gasoline taxes and how other information might, might go. I know you probably just had a fraud risk assessment that was just presented. We made sure you complied and that was presented to you as a council. And this year, we also tested your cash management twice a year. You have to file reports with the state treasurer's office to show where your, your money, not only your bank accounts, but your investments and how much you hold in each. So the money management at council can actually look at your information to see if you're complying with state code. Happy to report as we tested all of that information that was listed there, we didn't find any deficiencies, any control weaknesses. We felt you're complying with what the state outlined in their compliance audit guide. So you have no findings. Congratulations. I know one of the things as we talked about with the audit committee that we haven't been able to present to tonight because we as auditor uh, that we haven't been able to present to tonight, because we as auditors are still waiting for what is the audit guidance when it comes to the CARE Act money that you received? And you've received enough federal and spent enough federal resources during fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020, that we're going to be performing what's called a single audit. Uh, now because the CARE Act, single audit requirements haven't been finalized by the federal government, we've gone ahead and issued this report. We'll have to come back and issue a separate report on the single audit, which we will probably start next week, but I'm still waiting. Federal government hasn't put out the audit requirements for that yet. So it's really, I know what you spent it on. Now it just needs the federal government to say, yeah, this is okay. And then what else do you need to do? You are classified really as a sub recipient with Salt Lake County. So really Salt Lake County is the one that has to report back to the federal government, whereas you report to Salt Lake County, but the county needs to make sure that you guys have spent the money in accordance with what the federal government wants those funds to be spent on. So we're just kind of waiting for that, but we thought we'd bring this report to you tonight. And we'll just have to separate them this year so that we don't hold up the filing of this report with the state auditor's office by the end of this month, end of this month. Uh, overall, one of the things we talked about with the audit committee is the, is, you know, did we find any problems? Did we have any recommendations? Our recommendations are all verbal. We had no management letter that we want to issue separately. We feel you're complying with government stand, accounting standards. And the biggest item area that we wanted to see maybe some improvement is just how you present uh, and give us capital assets to test. That was probably our hardest area to test. But there was no journal entries that came from the system hazardous. It's just kind of hard to track some of the stuff. So we're going to work with the finance department and is there a better way to present that information so that it's easier for us as auditors to obtain it and then not only help us, but help you as an organization in developing a footnote that you have to do when it comes to capital assets in your caper. Uh, are there any questions? Any comments or concerns over what you noticed as you read through the, the draft financial?
Anyone out? Dale? Go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I think the only thing to do is take our hats off to Brenda and her team for such a great job. We really appreciate it.
Diane?
I just want to concur with what, with what Dale said. Brenda, you did a great job and you deserve. And thanks for being so thorough. Also in the audit, we really do appreciate that. Rob and Brenda, you're awesome. So thank you. And I'm, and I, and I'm beginning to see numbers in my sleep. Oh my goodness. So it's crazy.
Sounds like I'll reach out to you later, Diane, and get you to come over and help me finish up some of the other cities I still got finalizing.
No, no, no.
Thank you.
Anyway, great job. Thank you.
Brett?
That was great. I'm just, yeah, I, I've never seen Brenda's head go like this so much when she was just bobbing like crazy, thinking how great it was. But hey, I'm wondering, um, and, and with, as the screen looks new to me, I, it seems like I'm looking at more. I don't know if it's changed the way Zoom is. You didn't have the numbers up there, did you? And I didn't see them when we were doing it. Would that be a thing maybe next time? When we're doing this, that maybe the, um, Rob, you could present and have the numbers up there? Cause I was going through some pages and couldn't keep up, but I mean, I've seen them, but I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but.
It is. I was on my, my, my video is on my phone because my camera on my computer is not working. So it would have been hard for me to share my screen. I could, I would, to see video on me presenting like this, I'd have to do it through my phone. I could have connected my computer as well, but then I get an echo that happens. We could share a screen and/or we could get, um, the council to pop these statements up electronically. Hopefully next year we're just meeting in person. I don't want this pandemic to continue to go out and have to, to do these presentations, whatever like this. I'd like to be associated uh, with all of you and, and, and have a discussion if this discussion so warrants and whatnot. I think it's a little bit harder, I've noticed through Zoom to have questions and comments and try and follow along where we at, but, uh, hopefully next year we're doing this live. Thanks Brett.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and we'll, we'll figure out the presentation part of that. I'm sure amongst ourselves, we could figure that out too. So I appreciate you, Rob.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything else? Comments? No? Okay. Well, perfect. We'll go ahead and move on. Thank you so much, Brenda and Rob, and we'll go ahead and continue on with our agenda. So next. Wait, Brenda, did you want to, sorry. Brenda, did you want to say anything?
Nope. I was going to just say thanks to Rob and, um, he can go do his next city and we'll go on about our business. Thank you.
Yeah. Finalized up in print form in the next day or two. If there's no other changes, we'll get it finalized the next day or two.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks guys.
All right. We'll go ahead and move on to item number two, reports from representatives of inter-local boards and commissions. And we'll start off with UAMs. Um, Blaine, if you want to go ahead and give us an update on that.
Yeah, thank you, Rosalba. Um, today was the IPA, Intermountain Power Agency, um, annual meeting. And I appreciate many of your support. Uh, we had a lot of staff members as well as council members that, uh, listened to all of it or part of it. Uh, in that annual meeting that we usually hold at the Grand America, we learned about the health of the project. We learned about the existing situation with the coal-fired plant, and we also learned about the future plans for uh, the, well, for the future. Uh, we learned that, uh, the existing coal plant will cease operation in 2025. And that there will be a parallel natural gas plant that is being built or designed at this point in time and built right next to it. And it will use both the hydrogen and natural gas mix. And I've talked to you about that before. We also learned today in our annual meeting, and maybe this is redundant to some of you, that that there are negotiations being done right now with the people that, um, have operated or will operate the Salt Cavern storage area. And also that there are negotiations with the natural gas pipeline that's being built from the Kern River main trunk line, um, about 50 miles west of the plant. And also finally, there's negotiations ongoing with a third-party hydrogen manufacturer plant that will be built right next to the existing plant. And of course they will make the hydrogen, uh, and then they will put it into storage for use it later. Now this use of hydrogen is kind of interesting. Um, it's, it's been on the radar screen for quite a while. But the fact that and I'm not a scientist by any means, but you can, you can make hydrogen, uh, but it usually takes a fossil fuel to break up the oxygen and the hydrogen atoms. And it's never been economically feasible because of it, because of the fossil fuel backup. You just, uh, uh, negated the value of hydrogen. But with the proliferation of hi, of renewables in the area, the goal is to use renewables like height, like a solar or wind or maybe perhaps geothermal. They'll use the renewables to power the production of the hydrogen. And then they'll store the hydrogen and then use, use the hydrogen later in the units when it's more financially feasible. And so this use of renewables is kind of a game changer to the whole Delta area. The IPA plant, uh, I sit on a sub-board from the IPA group. It's called IPSC. They're concerned about the keeping employees. Uh, the word is out now that the plant, the coal plant's going to uh, expire or, or, or cease operation in 2025. They're worried about some of these seasoned employees that are going to, uh, I guess you could say jump ship, and I almost can't blame them. But they're going to go on and, and get other jobs and leave the existing plant high and dry. So the plant administration out there is working on some incentives to keep, financial incentives to keep some of these key people at the plant until the plant is shut down. Now, the plant will go from 280 full-time employees to about 120 when the natural gas plant comes in. So there's going to be a, a loss of about 160 full-time employees. And they're going to try to use these employees and, and pop up companies that might, uh, might go in the area. But in the meantime, they're trying to make this financial incentive uh, beefy enough, I guess you could say, to keep them going. Uh, many of these plant people are nearing their retirement age. And so they're just trying to make them retire a couple of years later and then that will work out just fine. So I've been involved a little bit with, uh, negotiation of, uh, the incentives to keep these people going. One more item on the IPA, then I'll move to the UAMs group. The IPA debt that was started in 1980, 85, I think it was. Um, it's going to expire or be paid off in 2024. So there'll be about a year and a half to two years when the coal plant will operate with no debt. And that's, that's pretty good. I mean, that means that the price of power will drop from $60 a megawatt hour to about 40. About a third of the cost of the power is debt. Now that's going to make it possibly feasible for us to call back power in 2024 and 2025. And, uh, you know, we'll keep an eye on that. It kind of depends on what the market is, but when the debt falls off, it, it often makes it more feasible for us to do that. So obviously you know about that as, as the years go on. The UAMs organization, uh, the Utah Associated Municipal Power Systems. You know what? Counsel, since we voted no on the SMRs, the small nuclear, I haven't heard hardly a word. Uh, we're definitely off the radar screen. Uh, we are being shut out of the, uh, nuclear meetings, which is, uh, understandable. There were eight cities that dropped out of the project, us being one of them back in the last part of October, as you remember. And the remaining cities that stayed in are still monitoring the situation and trying to determine possibly when the next exit ramp is. I'm not sure what they're thinking, but there's all kinds of rumors going on as to what the plant configuration is going to be up there in Idaho. And these are rumors, but rumors that they're going to downsize the plant from 12 modules to six. Um, rumors that the module capacity will go from 60 megawatts up to 77 megawatts. Rumors that the DOE money will be spent faster to get us to, to get them to a certain point. Anyway, all rumors, but I guess you, the council needs to know that we, uh, we're, we're out of the know. We don't know what's going on there. And I still very, still feel very comfortable with the decision that we made as a council and as a city. Uh, I think time will tell that maybe the timing wasn't quite right with the nuclear. One final item, Rosalba, and then I'll pass it back to Russ Kakala, whoever's next. Uh, remember last year this time, we, uh, we voted to enter into a large-scale solar plant that's being designed and built down in the Navajo Nation. That is still ongoing. It's going well. Uh, the earliest we will receive generation from that plant is in 2022, which is still about a year away. We bought a five-megawatt chunk of a 50-megawatt plant. And we will get that power at around $30 a megawatt hour. Now that plant, when it was open to subscription by the UAMs group, filled up really fast. Other cities wanted it. And they grabbed it. We grabbed about 10% of that. It, it was popular to the point where UAMs group is now looking at another plant up in the Box Silver County area. And they're, uh, they've actually subscribed that. That plant was more money than the one we entered into. And I would think the efficiency of that plant is not going to be as good as the one we got. I mean, value Brigham City weather versus Bluff, Utah. I mean, you're going to see more sunlight down there in southwest part of the, southeast part of the state. So I think we've got a better plant, uh, still ongoing, but I'll let you know how that's going uh, as time goes on, but, uh, we're, we're pursuing that one, but not pursuing the one up in Box Silver County. So that's a quick report of what's happening. Uh, you know, you sit through a six-hour meeting and you gotta report it to you in four minutes. It's kind of tough, but, uh, thanks for the opportunity.
That was a good summary.
Thanks.
Nope. All right. Well, thank you so much, Blaine. It's always good to see you and, and get these updates and and hear what's happening with solar and power.
It's exciting.
Well, so.
Power's worked out.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you so much. We'll go ahead and move on to Russ. And you will be going over Transjordan. So go ahead and take it away.
Okay, um, so last, uh, meeting we had, we had the annual audit report also, um. It came back and we were in good standings, no deficiencies and, um, Brenda should have gotten, um, that report to review. Um, haven't heard nothing of that. So but we were, we were in good standings, no issues and, uh, that went, that went well. So last time I reported to you guys, um, we ended in, into an agreement with, uh, Sandy Suburban Improvement District. And that was over that three acres, um, for the transfer station in Sandy. We need a total of 10 acres. Um, Sandy City has seven acres, which connects, connects these acres together to give us that total of three, um, um, the total of 10 together of seven and three. So we, last meeting, we ended into agreement with Sandy City, um, for that seven acres of property, um, at a cost of, uh, it's a 50-year lease. It's the same, basically just like we did with Sandy, I explained last time. And it's a 50-year lease with an option to purchase, uh, for $1 after the 50 years. But they do receive and they will receive a host fee of $1 per ton, uh, which is approximately about $200,000 a year. So we've all agreed to do that. Um, it gives us that second transfer station, um, for our long-term planning, which is what we need to continue with, uh, the Transjordan cities and our solid waste. So I think it's going good. Um, a part of that will be budgeting from here on out. I told you before that we gotta plan on $2 tipping fee increases for the next six, six to seven more years to meet these goals and objectives that have been set forth for us once the, uh, trans, once Transjordan is closed. So we're going to need them transfer stations to go out to Bayview and transfer, um, trash. So that's all I've got. Unless you've got any questions, that's the news on Transjordan.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Russ? All right. Well, thank you for keeping us informed.
Hey, you bet. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to council of governments. Mayor? And you'll be covering also Central Valley water, correct?
Yes, I'll cover COG, Central Valley, and then Utopia. So thank you. Uh, the Salt Lake County Council of Governments, uh, meets four times a year. The last, uh, couple of meetings, the, um, the only matter of business in the August meeting was that, uh, we had a an opening on the TRCC board, uh, which, uh, a COG appointee on the TRCC board. And Mayor Rob Dally from Holliday was appointed to that. Uh, I, I will note though, that there will be no, um, TRCC funding available in 2021. So, uh, but we do have a full board. Also, uh, what was, uh, presented for discussion at that meeting and again at the November meeting, which was held on the 19th of November, uh, was the county's emergency response plan for homelessness for the winter. And, uh, they've been, uh, looking at, uh, temporarily, temporary and emergency winter housing needs and have identified, uh, a site in Midvale. Uh, but, uh, Mayor Hales from Midvale is, uh, who will find, uh, whether they be a vacant hotel, or I think that's what they were looking at in Midvale. Uh, but, but, uh, he was pleading with other cities and, uh, I believe they, uh, did find another uh, location in Mill Creek, but they did not disclose where that was. So uh, but, but there was some discussion about the, uh, homeless temporary and emergency housing needs. Usually the, uh, November meeting is a general assembly that's held up at the Columbus Center uh, with lunch and, uh, legislators or are invited and, uh, there's discussion about the upcoming legislative session because this meeting was done over WebEx. Uh, there were actually only, uh, two uh, legislators that were, uh, invited and were on the agenda. And that was, uh, Representative, uh, Mike Winder and Senator Wayne Harper. Uh, Representative Winder spent, uh, the majority of the time talking about his bills that he will be pre, presenting at the upcoming legislative session. And Senator, uh, Harper talked about, uh, a lot of the other bills that are going to be coming up, but he read them off in rapid fire. The message for me or the takeaway from that was, is that there are going to be a lot of bills that will be coming out in this legislative session coming up, starting next month. coming up, starting next month. And so how they're going to impact cities, it remains to be seen. I know that there are, there are a number of issues that they'll be looking at. So that's something that we'll be, we'll all need to be watching very carefully. We also received a presentation on The Point, which is the development at the point of the mountain where the state prison is. Alan Matheson is the executive director of what is now called The Point. The Point of the Mountain State Land Authority is what he's the executive director of. But they presented the concepts that they're looking at down there. And some of you may be familiar with it. There is a website called, I believe it's thepointutah.org, I think it is, but it's got, it's, it's all concepts right now. They have, they're talking about housing, business parks, green space, and high-tech transportation and things like that. But we'll be seeing a lot of that in the future. It's kind of an interesting presentation, but there's, that's going to be really kind of fun to see what they're going to be developing down there and and the vision for that seven hundred acres. Let's see, that's about it for COG. The, the next meeting will be in January, January twenty-first, and there'll be a meeting in May, August and November again next year. So are there any questions about COG?
No. It doesn't look like there's any questions, Tamara.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Let me talk about Central Valley Water Reclamation Facility. Let me talk just a minute and maybe even give you a little bit of background for those of you that either are new or maybe forgotten some of the issues that we're dealing with over there as far as construction goes. The the Condition Assessment and Asset Management Plan of Central Valley identified, and this, this was done, I don't know, two or three years ago, but identified an estimated a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of restorations to Central Valley's collection system and piping, and as well as the treatment facilities that will be needed over the next twenty years. So those are well underway. In fact, while I'm speaking, maybe I'll show you a couple of pictures of what's going on over there. The improvements will replace aging and degraded mechanical and electrical equipment in the treatment plant. And and rehabilitate corroded collection systems and pipes to meet the future needs of the community and assure that we are meeting state and federal regulatory requirements. Now, in addition to in addition to those requirements, the state of Utah DEQ, this is just a reminder, because I think you all know this, requires the wastewater facilities install processes to further remove phosphorus and lower limits for ammonia and other pollutants. So to comply with these requirements and lower the permit limits, Central Valley is upgrading the treatment process at an estimated cost of a hundred million dollars over the next seven years. So that's what, that's what a lot of these construction photos are. They're, it's out with the old and in with the new. So let me talk a little bit about the budget. We've just approved the the budget for twenty twenty-one. Remember that being a district, Central Valley is on a calendar year, budget year. So the budget was adopted in October. Central Valley conducted a market wage study that resulted in the need for fifty-seven market adjustments. We found that the wages were, were falling, falling way behind the industry. And so those needed to be included. Also included in the budget is a one-point-seven percent cost of living adjustment for the employees. They also funded the career ladder and merit increases with, at two percent for merit and one-point-seven-one percent for career ladder, and that affects twenty-six employees. So the cost for these market adjustments is about six percent of the budget. But with a little bit of creative work, a position was eliminated and some other things that were done, the actual overall increase in wages and benefits is, is only two-point-one-three percent. So those of you that know Justin Zollinger know that he's, he can be very creative. And so there are no new positions in the budget and a safety position that was added last year. A third safety position was eliminated to reduce it back to two. And health insurance was actually decreased by three-point-seven-seven percent. And the way that they did that was Central Valley moved to P E H P Single Option HD, HP Summit Plan. In other words, a high deductible health plan. So that decreased insurance cost by three-point-seven-seven percent. So the, let's see. The overall operating budget showed an increase of three-point-two-seven percent. I want to talk a little bit about flow metering. Flow metering is how Central Valley determines the amount of assessment to make to each of the member entities. And so they, they meter the flow at certain points coming out of the city or the district. And that's how it's determined what are, what we, what we have to pay them. Well, they came across a, an issue with the flow metering. And it was the beginning of November of twenty nineteen. So about a year ago, they started putting in new flow meters to replace some flow meters that had been, that were basically out of, out of useful life and, and were not able to be supported by the manufacturer anymore. So they replaced the, the flow meters and then they started finding out that there, there was discrepancies in the flows by quite a bit, coming from the, the entities. So so what they have done, they, they, the discrepancies were pretty significant for a couple of entities, and it's, it included five entities. One of them is Murray. But it was significant for a couple of them to the point that if they were to go back and to back charge them right now, especially without really good data, that it would be a bit of a hardship. So what was, what was recommended was that the meter discrepancies were reviewed with the member entities at a workshop that was held on Thursday, October fifteenth. And, and several corrective actions were discussed. And what they, what they recommended to the board was for budgeting purposes that, and I failed to mention that the, that there's a twelve-month rolling average that our assessment is based on. So, so yeah, proposing to the board that the same twelve-month rolling average for twenty twenty be used for budgeting purposes for twenty twenty-one. And then in and then, and then after they get good data, then they go, they'll go back and verify what actual flows were and then true up the the assessments then. I know that's kind of, it's kind of complicated and it's actually much more complicated than that, but, but trying to simplify it and make it short, the Central Valley Legal Council reviewed the inter-local agreement, the bond and financial documents, and proposed amended flow metering calculations. And it's her opinion that we can suspend the use of the twelve-month rolling calculation as defined in the inter-local agreement. Remember, this is part of the inter-local agreement, but it's her opinion that it can be suspended as defined in the inter-local agreement as long as a corrective assessment billing is done in September of twenty twenty-one. So the motion was made to suspend the, the use of the twelve-month rolling average to, for the purpose of determining member entity monthly assessments from January twenty twenty-one to August twenty twenty-one during this interim period to determine each member entity's monthly assessment based on a monthly calibrated and verified meter reading. So thereafter, the member entity's monthly assessment will be continued on a twelve-month rolling average. So that, that's kind of a long version. It's a short version of a long story, but the bottom line is, is that Danny Astle and Ben Ford believe that there will be a minimum impact on Murray. In fact, Danny believes that it actually might save us a little bit of money, that we may have been paying a little bit more than we needed to based on the, the other flows. So that's, that's that in a nutshell. So any questions about Central Valley?
Anyone? No? All right. Well, thank you so much, Mayor. We will go ahead and move on to Brenda for the UIA, Utah Infrastructure Agency.
Would you, would you like me to go over the Utopia?
Yes. Yes, Utopia. I apologize.
That's fine.
I had it in my notes right here that you were going to interview Utopia. So no, we have no questions about Central Valley.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And actually, Brenda will take some of the Utopia when it comes to the budget and finance part, but I do, there's a couple of things I want to, to mention about, about Utopia. First one is, is that the buildout in Murray and other cities is, is moving ahead of the published schedule. When I say published schedule, the one on their website, the website shows a substantial buildout at the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three for, for Murray. But but we are ahead of schedule. For example, if you were to look at their map and you look at the area that they identify as MU thirteen, which is the area where Kat has a home and where I have a home, and it shows that that buildout is not until the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-two, but fiber was, was laid there this summer. So we have fiber in the ground there. It's not lit up yet. Don't know when it will be, but they are running ahead of schedule. So that's, that's good news. The other thing I wanted to just mention really briefly is, and I'm gonna share the screen here. This, this came from the October Utopia subscriber report, which I, I sent to the council. And so you may have had an opportunity to look at it. Unfortunately, in this report, they didn't include the raw numbers on most of these. But I just wanted to draw your attention to a couple of the graphs that were in it. And that is, first of all, the residential availability of fiber. The reason I, I thought it would be good to bring this up is, I don't know about you, all of you on the council, but I get asked a lot about when is Utopia going to be available and, and these kinds of questions. But right now, the residential availability is, as you can see, it's just under eight thousand homes. And the total is somewhere between ten thousand and twelve thousand, looks like around eleven thousand. The Murray residential subscribers somewhere right between right in the middle. But I think what's more important than the actual numbers as we look at this is, is the trend. As we look at the trending on all these graphs, this graph goes from August of twenty sixteen to August of twenty twenty, and it's, it's a steady climb all the way on the residential subscribers and, and in fact, on totals, total subscribers as well, including the businesses. So the total subscribers are around thirty-four hundred. And then the take rate is, is also important. And this is one that they did give us actual numbers on. I'll, I'll show them to you in just a second, but the take rate went from less than twenty-five percent back in, in August of, of twenty sixteen up to just under thirty-five percent in August of twenty twenty. So again, a steady climb. And these are the, the actual numbers. And you can see Murray here in the middle. And, and these are just from the last, well, not the last three, but the three months, July, August, and September. You can see they stayed pretty, pretty steady, just under thirty-four to just over thirty-four, to very slightly higher in September. But if you look at the, the asterisks, they note that the cities under active or recent rebuild or buildout, I should say, often experienced a decrease due to rapidly increasing number of available addresses. So as they are adding available addresses, it, it takes a minute for the take rate to catch up, but, but I found it interesting that none of these, none of these cities actually decreased during those months. So they're all increasing. I think the, the COVID has been a positive thing for technology in general and has helped the Utopia out. So with that, I'll, I'll, I will turn it over to Brenda. She, and she can talk about the financial part of it along with UIA and, unless you have some questions for, for me over what I just covered.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mayor, on, and maybe you don't know this, but I've always noticed on West Valley City, and I know they were a major participant, that their numbers are so much lower than us. Is it because they're so large and spread out, or is there, what's the reason that they're always hanging around the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen percent number?
Yeah, no? Yeah, that's a really, that is a good question, Brad. And I think a lot of the reason is, is that when they started doing initial buildouts, they were looking at areas where there would be, where they figured there would be high take rates. And, and, and some of these other cities had, had higher take rate potential. And West Valley kind of got, kind of got left behind. It was really more logistically about where they could put the fiber in and, and where, where they could put it in more, how do I put this? I guess more cost-effective. And so now that we're getting close to the end of the buildout, then West Valley will, will be built out, you know, pretty rapidly. But that's, that's an interesting, interesting observation that you make.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right. Anyone else have any questions? Perfect. Brenda?
So in our last UIA and Utopia meetings, the UIA update basically is they're doing their last bond. They're having a public hearing next Monday, or, yeah, Monday, the fourteenth, two Mondays away. And they are going to bond for the final fifty million dollars in debt that will finish building out Murray and all the remaining cities that were originally part of the Utopia, Utopia UIA. It's important to note that they already have made, they're making enough money on their current connections to cover this bond payment. They're not asking our city for any more pledges or anything. They're just going to go out and bond it and then finish this buildout of the original cities. Also, due to the state auditor's risk assessment that they had to do, they had to do the same thing that we've had to do. They have voted to establish an audit committee. I think they have a budget committee for them. It's pretty simple for them to get really some finance people on their audit committee because a lot of the members of the board are finance directors or have finance backgrounds. In February or March, their budget has them and they were going, they are going to pay us back seventy thousand dollars of the OpEx that we have paid them back, I don't even remember what year it was. We've made a couple OpEx payments. And they have started paying those back to cities and we will see half of ours and then the other half will come back in February. I did not put that in our budget. We don't need to have anything budgeted to receive revenue. And I figured we could, unless we need it for something else, we will just let that roll back into the, the general fund reserves. As the mayor said, COVID has actually been very helpful and beneficial to As the mayor said, COVID has actually been very helpful and beneficial to Utopia UIA's connections. During March, April, and May, they were averaging 1,000 new connections a month. It has slowed down a bit. Now they're running around 700 new connections a month. Part of that is that they are building in various areas and as new neighborhoods come on, of course, people sign up and so that spurs some of the connections. I'm hoping, and I will probably talk to them at the board meeting and just make sure that they do, when they open up areas in Murray, that we are just made aware of it. I don't know how much advertising we can do for them, but due to constraints with Comcast and cities promoting private businesses and all that kind of fun stuff. But hopefully, they will make some good inroads and do a lot of marketing once they get the, all of the neighborhoods opened up because there are lots of people that I think are looking forward to getting, getting hooked up and being able to use Utopia UIA. I love my internet, so it's never down, never slows down, and I really like that. So that's about what's happening. They haven't released their financial audit yet. It will be filed by the end of December. They are working through some issues like we are, just trying to make sure everything is all okay. And then, once they do that, I can release or tell you some of their numbers. But their number of connections and their coverage for their debt is looking good for UIA. So that's what we hope for from them. They just keep getting more and more customers. And the likelihood of us having to ever pay the UIA debt payments gets less and less. So that's what we want. So that's it. Any questions?
Any questions, anyone? All right. Well, thank you, Mayor, as well. And Brenda, I will go ahead and let you continue on with your, the next item.
It's Doug.
Oh, sorry.
I skipped over and did UIA and Utopia.
That's right. You did.
They're interchangeable sometimes.
Okay. Yes, Doug, Valley Emergency Communication Center. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I represent the city on the Board of Trustees for VEC, Valley Emergency Communication Center, or also known as Salt Lake Valley 911. I also represent the city on the Board of Directors for the Metro Fire Agency. I'm going to start with the VEC report. And as a little background, I want to remind you all that in Salt Lake County, there are two dispatch 911 agencies that cover all of Salt Lake County. The largest being VEC, which is comprised of member cities, all cities except for Salt Lake City and Sandy City, as well as UPD and Unified Fire. The other agency is the Salt Lake City 911 Center, which, as I previously mentioned, also includes Sandy City. In order to combine the efficiencies of these two call centers, VEC has spent the last year purchasing new dispatch software that is compatible with Salt Lake City and VEC and is used by all of the police and fire agencies located in Salt Lake County. Just recently, within the last few months, the software went live for all of the fire agencies. So Murray City have, fire has been dispatched using this new software. And it seems to be working mostly pretty well, like you'd expect with any new software. There are some hiccups that have to be resolved. For example, this software uses what is called an automatic vehicle locator system. And so when a call comes in, apparatus that is closest to where the call came in is dispatched to it in order to cut down the amount of time that it takes to travel to the call. Because Murray City is located in the center of Salt Lake County, Murray City gets called out a lot more and other people respond within the city a lot more than we like. So Chief Harris is working with the other chiefs to resolve some of those call out issues so that when a resident in Murray City calls 911, then our city fire department responds and we don't get a response from a neighboring city or agency. So that's, that's one of the issues that's trying to be resolved right now. The police departments are now just starting to be set up for it. So Murray Police is one of the first cities that they're going to set up. And over the next half a year or so, next six months, the police departments will be migrated onto this new software. And ultimately, then everybody in Salt Lake County will be able to be dispatched using the same software and have access to the same information. Now, that was something that was required by the legislature about six years ago. They provided some funding to help make this happen. And now, so here we are, six years later, and it's finally starting to be realized. So that was the first item I wanted to report on. The second issue has to do with a legislative audit that was conducted on all 911 centers located in the state of Utah. And you may have read about this in the newspaper a few months ago, but the Valley Emergency Communication Center was actually rated as one of the poorest performing dispatch centers in the state. Now, there are reasons for that. Not so much of, it doesn't have as much to do about the, the employee performance as it has to do with the number of calls that come in, in Salt Lake County, and it overwhelms the number of employees that are employed by VEC as well as the old software system that they were using, which did not, not allow Salt Lake City and VEC to communicate with each other. So there had to be a lot of transferring of calls, which increased the amount of time that it took for police and fire agencies to respond. So with that in mind, with that audit in mind, the Board of Trustees asked the staff of VEC to put together a, some goals, performance measures that would help them to increase the performance of, of the call center. And I'm just going to share those goals with you here on my screen. So you kind of get a sense as to what's happening with VEC. So the first, the first row there shows that the, the standard for answering calls within 15 seconds or less, it should be 85%, or in other words, 85% of all calls that come into a dispatch center should be answered within 15 seconds or less. You can see that VEC's performance does not reach that level. In fact, last month's performance, which was really October's, only reached 71.43%. So there is still some ways to go to, to get to that 85%. Going down another row, you can see similar information for 20 seconds or less. The third row shows how long it takes to actually process, completely process a fire or EMS call and in 60 seconds or less. And again, VEC's performance is still not meeting those desired times. And then finally, the number of transfers that are taking place, which is the one bright area in the goals because of the new software, which shows that the number of calls that are now being transferred to another agency such as Salt Lake City has reduced from almost 27% down to just a little bit over 9%. So, so that is something that as a board, we are encouraging or holding the staff at VEC accountable for to try to improve those statistics. It's also very, very important for the state legislature to see those statistics improve. So. And then finally, I want to talk a little bit about the member agency fee structure. So currently, the way that Murray City is billed and all the agencies and cities are billed is based on call volume. And that's the number of calls that come into the center. You have a certain percentage of them are coming from Murray, then Murray pays each year annually that certain percentage of the operating budget for VEC. There are a number of cities and agencies that with this new software that's been implemented are now questioning, questioning the fairness of the assessment based on the call volume. So the, the Board of Trustees has organized a focus group to look at the way that VEC bills the member cities and whether or not there could or should be a different way of billing that. So that will be studied over the next few months and it'll be presented to the board during the budget process next fiscal year, which is the same fiscal year as Murray City, and how that will impact our budget and our assessment that we pay to VEC annually. I'll have to report that as I learn more information about that. But that, that could be a, a change in what has historically been done in the past. So that's my report on VEC and you'll be pleased to know that there's nothing to report on the Metro Fire Agency. There has not been anything significant really for me to report to you on. So that's it.
All right. Well, thank you, Doug. I had a quick question in terms of the responses we get. If we're responding in terms of our membership pay, are we responding more? Have we responded more before to other agencies or other cities? I mean, does that come into play too, or?
Well, in the, so prior to this new software, no, mostly you saw Murray staying in Murray and people outside of Murray didn't come into Murray. Because they didn't use this method of the vehicle that's the closest would respond, right? So if the call came from Murray, then VEC would dispatch Murray Fire. Now what's, now what's happening, again, in order to improve the service to the caller, because we all know, especially on a, well, on all police and fire calls, time is of the essence. And even if it's 10 seconds faster to get a fire engine there or an ambulance there, it's better for the person making the call than having to wait. But in some instances, it's only just a matter of a few seconds that the software is saying somebody from South Salt Lake could get into Murray faster than Murray could get. Well, we don't want people from, we don't want the agencies from South Salt Lake responding in Murray. Even, even if it is only five seconds faster, we still, our residents deserve our fire department or police department to respond. So, so those are the issues that they're trying to resolve, the, the fire agencies are trying to resolve so that Murray can respond within our city and not have somebody else come in. I, I don't know if that makes sense or if that answered your question.
Yeah, no, it, it does. I just wanted to kind of get a little bit of clarification. But yeah, thank you so much, Doug. Does anybody else have any questions? All right. Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh huh. We'll go ahead and move on to Kat, and you will be giving us an update on the Economic Task Force. So go ahead.
Yes. So I've been sitting on the Economic Task Force and its function has shifted a little, a little bit since it was formed with the rising case numbers of COVID. Its primary function has sort of shifted to be a way for the city businesses and Murray Chamber to maintain open communication, share resources, like grant information, small business loans and other resources that become available. And Melinda has been really essential in helping communicate with the Chamber and that we really appreciate her thriving in Murray, but others are struggling to remain open. COVID's impact on the economy has been really uneven and unpredictable at times. So the task force is continuing to meet and discuss challenges as state mandates change and broader health recommendations evolve, and that shifts the impact on businesses and their practices. So they're continuing to discuss and problem solve and kind of collect a library of resources for businesses and help businesses navigate those resources whenever possible and offer sort of technical assistance. But I don't have any major updates beyond just sort of the general description of what they're working on right now.
Okay. Great. Does anybody have any questions?
I was just going to say that I think you, you said it absolutely perfect. It's been so uneven or unfair. COVID just does not affect everyone the same. I don't mean health-wise. I mean economically-wise. Economy-wise. And I'm just thinking like, it is, it is so tough for so many of them out there, so many of them out there. And then you've got others that are just thriving and have done, well, we've heard reports on that, are doing better. So I appreciate that on that report. And then I also wanted to say one more thing. We thank Brenda for the, for the finances, but I wanted to throw out a thanks to Diane and Kat and Jan for your time on the budget. So thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you so much, Kat. We will go ahead and move on to announcements. Jen, do we have any announcements?
I do have something I wanted to mention, and I want to recognize a very special person in my office. Patty, can you turn on your video, please? There she is. Patty's my right hand. You guys all know that. And she knows what I need and want even before I do. She has things sitting out waiting for me. So it's so rewarding to have somebody like that working with you. And Patty is celebrating her five-year anniversary. She started in December of 2015. And actually, she started on the council holiday party day. So that day, I put her to work washing dishes and serving punch and, and refilling sandwiches. And she just did whatever was needed to be done and hasn't stopped. So I appreciate all that she does. She's a great asset, and I know she'll be a tremendous help to the transition when we have a new council director. And she has a, I don't know if you can see this. Can you see that? I guess not. I have an envelope for her with something in it. And I don't know what it is. Patty? Did you choose something?
I don't know. I don't know what's in there either.
Oh, I, didn't you get to choose a gift card from someplace?
I'm not sure. Why don't you open it? You can tell me.
She's not about to commit to that.
Let's see if it says. I'm opening the famous envelope. Oh, it's, it's a $50 gift card and it goes to a number of different places. So they have about, one, two, three, 10 places listed here. You can get food or clothes or household items or all kinds of good things.
Oh, that's so nice. Thank you.
It'll be here waiting for you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you. You guys, it's fun.
Five years. Congratulations, Patty. We really appreciate you.
Thanks, Diane. It's been a pleasure. It's gone by fast.
Great for us. I know.
Yeah. And Doug's the one who, who told me, give it two years and see if you like it when it first started. So.
We're so lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Congrats on five years, Patty. That's awesome. Seems like, seriously, it doesn't seem like five years. Seems like a couple. So Doug was right. You had to give it two years to make sure you liked it. And Doug's given it, what, 40 years? So he's, he knows what he's talking about. So, okay.
So, okay, 30.
Okay, that, that's all I have, Rosalba. And if we want to take a short break, we start with Municipal Building Authority at 6:25.
Yes, thank you so much. We are adjourned, everyone. See you soon.